Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this regular meeting of Roxbury's Board of Selectmen. This is a regular meeting. Everybody will stay muted. I know we have a lot of people online that would like to make a comment during the public comment section, and I'll go over the rules on that as we go along, but I would like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. And our first order of business is the approval of last month's minutes. You guys had a chance to look those over?
Yes.
Yeah. I have, I have three things.
Go for it, Kim.
Okay, under zoning alternate, just add by Patrick. Julie, let me know if you need me to describe more.
That's good. I've got it.
Yeah, I see it.
Second one is under business. I don't remember, or could I see on the PowerPoint that it said colonial concourse? I thought it was just like Roxbury concourse, but just concourse, maybe just delete colonial. I didn't, I missed that.
Well, no, it would be Roxbury's Colonial Concourse. So you would add Roxbury to that.
Okay, I never saw the word colonial, but it's okay. Sorry, Julie.
I can't, I can't hear you. Sorry. I don't know why you can't hear me.
I can hear you now, yeah.
Was colonial on the agenda?
I don't, I don't know. I was looking at the, at the PowerPoint and I didn't see, yeah, that's all.
Okay, I can go back and add Roxbury and I can double check that.
Okay, and then at the end of that, second to last sentence, we mentioned the art show for October 7th as a, as a possibility. I just wanted to make sure that who was put in there that I expressed, I had expressed concern about conflicts with other art shows that were already established in town. Just as, as a reminder of that. And then the last thing was on the Fire Marshal's report, it listed the third floor for the town garage and it should be the second floor. That's it.
Okay, with those corrections, can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
All right.
I don't, I think that's the meeting I missed because I was sick, so I'm staying.
Correct, and I will second, I will second that all in favor. Hi. All right. All right, on to Tax Collector's Report. We actually have a lot. There was one very large overpayment. So refunds requested are $6,830. Yeah, two people actually had paid their taxes twice. And then there were two for overpayments for real estate and one wrote for payment on a car. So total of 6,830 at 39 cents, if I can get a vote to approve the refunds.
I'll make a motion to approve the refunds listed on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Russ.
A second.
Thank you, Kim. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? All right, okay, we are on to the communications from the public. So I just wanted to write, just read a quick statement about how this is going. You know, first and, and most importantly, this is a proposal and the exploratory stage, no decision has been made. We understand that the company had posted this information on the, their website. It has been removed. Second, many questions that still need to be answered since the original proposal was simplified PowerPoint presentation with few details. Since the Board of Selectmen only meets once a month, we plan to review the balance of the information this evening. Please know that we would never agree to do something that would knowingly have a negative impact on our town. We do believe that everyone, including those with proposals, have the right to present ideas and comments. It is our job to first listen completely and then make educated decisions. And I'd like to now open up the floor to public comment. We will call on people and speak one at a time. You can either raise your hand or write a comment using the chat function at the bottom of your screen. Those I will read aloud. And what I'm gonna do is I'm, because this is just a public comment stage, I'm gonna be keeping track of your comments as we go through, and then we'll have a chance to answer some of those at that point of the meeting. And I'm gonna limit comments that you have to one minute. So I'm gonna go in order as we start. So I see Meredith is the first with your hand raised. So welcome, Meredith. Thank you for joining us.
Real quick, Patrick, there is no chat function.
Oh, okay, so you'll have to raise your hand. My apologies.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, that's odd. I see that now. Okay. All right.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Meredith Caranta and I live at One Juds Bridge Road in Roxbury. I have lived in town for 18 years with my family. I come before you tonight to voice my opposition for the proposed townwide three-day event and other potential scheduled events put on by RPM. From my perspective, it will not directly benefit our residents and our local businesses, put undue strain on our minimal town resources such as fire and EMS, and has the major ability to create a health, safety and environmental impact on our beautiful town. More importantly than my opposition for the event, I am very concerned and disappointed to learn that this has been, is being pushed by our first selectman, Patrick Roy. It has been brought to my attention that an outside advertising and promotion company run by Cara Kenny, RPM, she is a Southbury resident, not a member of this community, and has a childhood relationship with a member of our town hall staff named John. For the record, I hope that John can be identified as I think this is important information. After watching the January 3rd Board of Selectmen's meeting, it is clear that our first selectman is in support of and willing to push this event forward. For the record, many of you may or may not know Roxbury Parks are available for rent for Roxbury residences, Roxbury businesses and Roxbury nonprofits only. Based upon that framework, which has been in place for as long as I can remember, how could we even allow such an event? After reviewing the prior Board of Selectmen and zoning minute meetings, or minutes for the meeting and recorded video, I have learned that our first selectman and John, the childhood friend of the event applicant, have initiated a change to zoning regulations to accommodate this and other events proposed by individuals and companies outside our community. They are looking to create a special event permit. All of this has been in the works with no communication with the residents and no approval from the Board of Selectmen. There has been no informational meetings, public outreach, public input or public hearings. RPM is already advertising this and selling tickets for this massive event that has not been approved by our town. I would like to also add that it was also being advertised at Candlelight Farms, which is the venue that supposedly we have outgrown at 300 acres. They have a hefty price on their land. From my perspective, after watching the video from the January Board of Selectmen's meeting, I have to thank Kim Tester for slowing down this process. Because I do believe if it wasn't for her, this would have been approved. Patrick, when you raised discussion on proposing a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, there was a public input and it was in the local newspaper. When you decided to explore the solar facility on town property, there was a public outreach and an informational townwide well-advertised meeting. For the record, why was this, none of this done for the changing of zoning to allow a special events permit by outside individuals and organizations for profit? In closing, I am not in support of this event held on town property. I'm not in favor of changing, of changes to our zoning regulations, which would provide a mechanism for said outside non-resident event holders. I am very disappointed to learn this was put forth and pushed by our local elected officials as it does not have the pulse of this community. In the future, if anything like this comes up, I expect that it be handled in a way that the residents are notified and have the ability to add public input. Most of us here tonight would never have known about this if it was not for a social media post by a resident. Most of us in our busy lives do not have the time to read all the agendas and meeting minutes. Contrary to this conundrum, I am very supportive of Roxbury events that will directly benefit our Roxbury businesses and community. My suggestion is we form an economic development committee or a chamber of commerce compromised of local business owners and residents. Let's learn what their difficulties and needs truly are and how we can put together local Roxbury-based events and other functions to ultimately allow them to thrive. Roxbury is the most beautiful town in Connecticut with the most amazing natural resources. Never should we allow companies, corporations or local government the ability to exploit it. We are not for rent. Thank you for your time and I hope you see this rectified, to see this rectified. In the future, let's be more transparent. So this never happens again. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate it, Meredith. I know that went quite over, but I do appreciate your feedback and it does mean a lot. The next person up is Trevor.
Thank you, Patrick and Kim and Russ. Patrick, thank you for the opening statement, which seems to address a lot of my concerns about the proposed event in that this is still in the exploratory stages. My very brief observation here is that I think some kind of classic car event is actually a good idea for our town, but I think it should reflect the character of our town in terms of the, the kind of more rural and small community feel that we have. The RPM proposal, when I read it, was mind-blowing because it seemed more like a Led Zeppelin concert than Pickett and Fiddling. So again, I am definitely encouraged by your response in the opening statement and I believe that we'll all come together to arrive at something that's really great for Roxbury and thanks for your time.
Appreciate your feedback. Thank you so much, Trevor. John Cody is next.
Hi, my name is John Cody. I'd like to get on the record. I've lived in town for give 25 years, give or take one or two. I do know Cara. I went to school with Cara 40 years ago. I haven't spoke to Cara in probably 39 of those missing 40 years. So we just got back in touch a year ago when she wanted to do a car show. It seemed like a good idea, so we went forward with the progress and would like to raise some money for our volunteer services. My question I have for everyone out there is why would the town choose a missing opportunity to raise money for volunteers on speculations? I say we try it and if it doesn't work out as well as we want it to, we don't do it again. If we don't take the chance, we will never know how successful this could be. There's a minimal risk on our behalf and a benefit certainly outweigh that. If anyone has any opportunity, any questions about this, I've worked for the town hall, they could call me, ask me about 824 referrals and stuff like that. As far as regulation changes and how that goes around, I'm one of your employees and I'm there for you. So feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your feedback. Are there any other public comments?
Yes.
Margaret, I'm sorry, Margaret Miners next up. If you could, under reactions, you should have a hand raise down at the bottom where you can actually just raise that. So Margaret, you have the floor. Margaret, you're on mute. Okay.
I am unmuted.
There you are, Margaret.
I, I always have trouble unmuting after raising head. Okay, just to say, I appreciate the comments. I'm in agreement that this is not in the interests of Roxbury. If it were to go forward, I would have a number of questions about the financial arrangements, what's guaranteed? What if, if local charities are supposed to get the money, how much money? So my questions would mostly relate to the finances of the sponsor and how the event is financially structured. And I don't think it's a good event. It's near me. That would be a horrible couple of days. Okay, thanks.
I understand. Thank you, Margaret. I appreciate it. Next I have Charlie and Sue Stoffaker. How are you today? Still on mute.
Thank you, Patrick. I have, I have a couple of questions. So what's the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen over the use of the park? Is there an ordinance? Are there criteria for your decision? Is there a permit that has to be granted? Is there a hearing that has to be held? What is the source of your authority to, to let something like this happen in the park? That's my first question. And my second question is, was there a request for an amendment to the zoning regulations to regarding this process submitted?
Okay, um, I want to answer all the questions at the end because I bet you a lot of people also have those kind of same questions. So because this is only the public comment phrase, I'm just gonna write those down. So I'll be answering the questions at the end. The next person I have up is Paula. Thank you, by the way, Charlie and Sue. I appreciate your feedback.
Hear me? Oh, can you hear me?
There you go. Now we can. Thank you, Paul.
You know, I think the concept is wonderful. I mean, I love vintage cars. We have one. The, the problem I have is this is too big for our bridges. Um, you know, I could see this sort of event taking place on the, on the, on fairgrounds. But Apple Lane is not a fairground. Apple Lane is a town recreation site with very limited parking and, and other facilities, electricity and what have you. Fairground, yeah, but not Apple Lane. And I feel particularly sorry. I live nowhere near. I'm way up, you know, near the airstrip. And I feel particularly badly for the folks who live right around there because this is so intrusive on for them. And also looking at the map, the aerial map with the, that where everything is labeled, the number of tents with little, little champagne glasses, the number of bars, the number of people, the number of cars, the, the number of, the amount of drinking this might be involved in. I don't know, you know, it's, it's just, it's too big for our bridges. We're just too, we're too small for this sort of thing. I, I, I had heard, I heard inklings about a car show and I'm thinking, oh, good. People are gonna pull in in their 57 Chevys and their 65 Mustangs. This ain't it. This is something that's truly gorgeous, but I think it's too big for us for the kind of event. That's all I have to say and I can't support it. I just can't in my heart support this. I'm done.
Okay, I appreciate the feedback. Thank you, Paula. And I see it says Patricia Clark, but I know that's Mo. So Mo, you're up.
Yeah, that's me. Thanks, Patrick. The, can you show at some point the, the layout? Because that, that shows you that the plan is to use every single square inch of the park and it's gonna crowd out the Roxberians who actually support the town and the park. And that, that by itself makes it a bad, bad, bad idea. The VIP areas are multiple. I don't consider myself in a VIP and I don't think most people in Roxbury do. There's some other things about it that are particularly bothersome for me. And if you look in the packet that the marketing people have provided, there is one sheet that is labeled Roxbury Concourse Demographics. And on this sheet, it says, and I'm quoting, "Car enthusiasts are two times more receptive to advertising and more likely to pay more for high-quality items." Wow. Car enthusiast's average net worth is 50% higher than the national average. Very impressive. Car enthusiasts are four times more valuable, more valuable, mind you, to marketers than average consumers. That would, the average consumer, I think, would be me. That's a little tone deaf, but it is rather revealing. The thought that this extravaganza would be using Roxbury as a platform to promote ideas such as I just, just quoted. On a slightly different level, I want you to know that there, in my view at least, I've been here for over 40 years. And my family goes back farther than that in this town. I care about it as much as you do, the rest of you. We all know that there are a number of individuals prominent in the arts and industry who could live anywhere, who have chosen to live here in Roxbury. It's been like that for a very long time. In spite of that, Roxbury is a decidedly low-key town. And I might say delightfully low-key. We should strive to keep it that way. This proposal on this evening's agenda will not aid us in that effort. In fact, it is likely to lead us in the opposite direction. We should have no part of it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mo. Larry Jennings is up.
Hi, this is my first participation and I've been in Roxbury.
Welcome.
Hi, I've been a Roxbury resident for 39 years. And there's no sense in reiterating what everyone has said, at least those people who have had objections, other than especially Meredith, who I think covered the territory and my vote is for a hard no. I don't think it fits the town in any way. It's a bucolic town. It's low-key and it seems like we will be overrun in just about every way. And so my, my vote is no. That's all I need to say.
Thank you, Larry. David is next. I don't know what last name that is. They only have David. David, do you have a comment?
Muted.
Yeah.
Here we go. How about now?
Oh, good.
There you go. It's David Miller. How are you, David?
I'm quite well, thank you. I've been in town quite a while and I don't really think it makes any difference if someone's been in town for one year or 70 years. It's, they all become a member of the town. So I think everyone should have an equal voice in this and I, I think it's a good idea. I think one of the things is that the small size of the park makes it self-limiting. Just by the design of the park, you could only put a small amount of cars and tents and such things in that area. So I don't quite see how it can turn into this enormous extravaganza. I think we should hear from the fire department and the ambulance and I, I think whoever is communicating with this company should find out what kind of monies they have decided to give to the different, different groups that help out, such as the firemen and the ambulance. I, I could see clearly that the Boy Scouts could become involved. It could become a, a community project much on like Roxbury days. Everybody loved Roxbury days and I mean, we had many, many more thousand people at Roxbury days than you will ever have at this, this car show. So the, the police and the auxiliary police from Southbury helped out during Roxbury days. The firemen helped out at Roxbury days and it, believe it or not, it went very, very smoothly for three days. So to wrap things up and not go on and on and on, I think it, I think it could be managed properly. A good event that would not harm the town any more than Roxbury days did. Or some of these big bicycle rides that closed the roads, runners that come in from out of town to run their events and our Roxbury events. So I think the rec commission, everyone should get together, see if it can work. Maybe it can't. Maybe it's not worth it. But we should at least entertain it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Missy Cole, how are you? You're up.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. And I will reiterate what a lot of our townspeople have already said, you know, and I've been involved in a lot of organizations on different levels and different events. I've worked at Lime Rock Park many summers when they have these events there. They're large. I get it. Our town is not equipped to handle something like this and I don't want to take away from our organizations that are gonna benefit from it. But I think we really need to take a hard look at the whole big picture. If the town or whatever venue before was too small, how are we any bigger? I mean, I moved here 20 something years ago because I like it here, you know? I still work in the rat race that I grew up in in Danbury and I don't want to have to come home on the weekend, that rat race that's down there. You know, some people may get upset, but it's the God's honest truth, you know, you've got a lot of old timers in town. This is gonna take a big, you know, impact. And, you know, I get this organization by reading everything has kind of come in with all their help and everything. And that's great, but, but show me and guarantee us that that's 100% proof, you know? And what percentage are you giving back, you know, to the two departments that they're going to vest in? There's a lot of unanswered questions and it's a great event, but I don't think it's for our town. I say no.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Raze Pomerantz, you're up. Thank you.
Hi, relatively new to town. I was very happy to hear the gentleman saying that. It shouldn't matter if somebody's here for 30 years or one year. But I've lived in the area for 35 years in a couple surrounding towns. I did title searches in the Roxbury Town Hall when it was, what's now the senior center. So I've, I've been in the area for a little while. I know Roxbury reasonably well and I'm thrilled to be living here and it's been a very welcoming community. So having said that, Patrick, I think you'll address this, just based on something I heard you say a few minutes ago about the special permit business. There's some, as a former practicing lawyer, I did some zoning work in the area and I'm can't guarantee this, my memory is a little shaky, but if I'm not mistaken, special permits are authorized by state statute under most town zoning laws, when something doesn't quite fit in the usages contemplated by the zoning laws. So I, I don't think it's fair to jump on the conspiracy theory bandwagon and say that, you know, that someone's trying to ramrod some new zoning thing down our throats. Because special permits, when something new comes to town, which is always gonna happen, no zoning law is gonna contemplate every potential use that comes into a town. A special permit is the thing that is, is authorized for the town to adopt for that particular circumstance and they can be modified and restricted and designed in such a way as to best fit the town. So it's not, I, I, Patrick, I hope you'll correct me if I'm wrong and clarify as if I'm, if I'm correct. But I just wanted to throw that in there. I'm having read everything on social media, I was so opposed to this thing. And then I went and actually looked at the video from the last month's town meeting or Board of Selectmen meeting, rather, and I thought, oh, this doesn't sound so terrible. I mean, Patrick said, someone said, I think to Patrick in that meeting that it would be roughly the scale of a Pickett and Fiddlin, which obviously the town knows how to handle. Hearing some of these other points about the design of this event being every square inch of Heroboth Park. Yeah, that doesn't sound too promising and it should certainly benefit the town. So I guess my point is, is that we shouldn't really listen to what we see and read on social media. And, you know, let's let Patrick and folks who maybe are, are elected officials, tell us what the plan is before we jump to conclusions. That's really all I have to say about it.
I appreciate it. I will be addressing that. Thank you so much for your comments. I appreciate you. Thank you. Ken Allen is next. How are you, Ken?
You're on mute.
There you go. You should be good, Ken. We can't hear you. You're off mute, though. Okay, I'm gonna, no worries, Ken. I'm gonna go to the next person. I'll come back to you, Ken, if you can get your volume going. Sarah Loria is next.
Good evening, everyone. Sarah Loria from Goldmine Road in Roxbury here. I have participated in last week's informational meeting regarding this. And I think it's imperative that we all take a breath and get the facts before we jump to conclusions. There's a lot of misinformation out there right now. And I am the ambulance chief, although I am not speaking on behalf of the entire ambulance association. As we have not had a meeting yet to discuss this due to the timing, our meeting is next week. But as the ambulance chief, I participated in last week's meeting. I have some remaining questions, but overall, I'm in favor of this. This could be a really positive event for the town. It could be a positive event for the community. It could be a positive event for the nonprofits. For the community. It could be a positive event for the nonprofits. It could be a positive impact on our businesses in town, including the store, the farm stands. And. The liquor store, et cetera, et cetera, as well as surrounding businesses in our surrounding towns. Uh, this is nothing we can't handle and I'm in support of it. I'd like to see how it goes and uh. Make sure we all get the facts. Thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you for your input. I appreciate it. Uh, Ken Allen is now on mute and he has lost picture. So is there any other public comments? Uh, I have one more. Holly Stark.
Actually, I'm going to let Ken speak. He's having issues with his computer and he-
Understood. Okay.
Yeah, so um, I was in one of the other meetings uh with, with the RPM. And I'm on the fence. Um, I, I, I totally agree. Um, with the, the comment that Sarah made, honestly, that we should let the first selectman and, and Kim and, and. You know, take care of the details, you know, vet the vendor. You know, there are things or procedural things that we need to do. Uh, quite frankly, um, in the previous meeting, I was um. Not very comfortable because we had asked RPM some very direct questions. And we got a lot of evasive answers. We got, and no answers. And particularly um, the financial side of it. So we need to have, you know, a, a very precise contract. Uh, we need to know how much insurance they have. We need to be identified on their policy. Uh, there are a lot of procedural things that must be done in a, on a, on a, an event this size. And I just wasn't. I didn't get a warm fuzzy feeling with the comments and, and the evasive responses from the vendor. Okay? That's my-
All right.
Mine's purely a business perspective. Okay?
Thank you, Ken. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments?
Uh, please remember that this is the only time you will have to comment. In the rest of the meeting, we will conduct our meeting as usual.
Okay, Tova, you're up on the front. Did you, I, and I saw your hand wave. So uh, you could be up next. You're the next person in my queue.
Am I unmuted?
You are. Thank you.
I just want to point out that it, you know, the difference between the analogies that people have been making. Are that um, between one day events and uh like Pickin' and Fiddlin'. And um, a three day event, which might entail people camping out. It, it's a, a different usage than the analogies that people have been making. I'm very opposed to it. Um, it just seems like a um, an accident waiting to happen, really. Um. I, it seems like such a gamble and such a huge step. In a direction that we haven't gone in. Um, it, it, as many people commented. We usually entertain local events that um, are Roxbury oriented and this is not. Um, it, it's not geared toward our town. It's not geared toward our citizens. There's nothing about it that. Um, is an analogy to what we've done. So I'm against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tova. And it looks like I have Joe Coranta also.
Patrick, hi, Kim. Hi, Russ.
How are you?
Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't uh want to regurgitate a lot of what was already said. I do want to however, jump on and um, you know, I guess remind um, the Board of Selectmen. About our conversation that I brought forth about a year ago roughly um, this time. And that discussion encumbered um, the spawn of some local economic vitality for our small business community. And as much as I am um, uh thrilled to hear that you guys are beginning to work on that with said event. I'm not convinced that this particular event hits that mark. And so today. I had the opportunity to speak to some of the local businesses. In fact, one of the local businesses that I spoke to came up with the idea of having a car show at his establishment. Um, and I, and I believe Patrick, if, if you recall, he had a conversation with you about having a car show. And some, as, as a small scale car show that would encumber using Munson Meadow for the afternoon. Um, and the idea was, was to drive business directly to our local businesses. So. As much as I think that this is, I think the idea is right, right? But. As many of the other uh participants in public participation stated. I do think it misses the mark and what it is really that, that original conversation that I brought to the Board of Selectmen's mission was. Was to um, you know, create uh direct economic vitality for. Although a small but prominent, you know, uh, business scene in Roxbury. So I'm going to agree with Meredith. And the idea that I think it would be wonderful to have a board or commission or a. Um, Chamber of Commerce comprised of our local businesses, uh, our business owners and our residents. And let's come up with some creative ideas on what fits the community best that I think everybody could, could, could live with and be happy with, right? So, so that's just my two cents. I'm, 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 I'm not, I'm not thrilled about this. I think it is a, 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 a large event. I don't agree with some of the comments that we can handle it, uh, because you know, I have experience uh with events here in town. That say otherwise. So um, I'll leave it in your hands. I look forward to seeing what you guys have to present and I appreciate the time to speak.
Appreciate it, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have Todd Wheeler on.
Hello, Patrick. Um, thanks for giving me a chance to talk.
Of course.
I think, I think this is a good idea in this stage as of now and keep, we should look with an open mind. And try and keep this moving forward. The top spot at the park, I would believe would handle it. We used to do old Roxbury days in town years ago. It took over a lot more area and a lot more part of the town. Um, I think this would be a good benefit for the two organizations in town and I think there's a lot of. Unanswered questions that can be answered pretty easily that a lot of people are jumping way forward on and way too far. Um, I'd like to get some more information on it, which I'm sure is coming in time. And I think it could be done.
Perfect. Thank you, Todd. I appreciate it. Uh, Trevor, you're back on.
Thank you again. Um, just a, a quick observation um, based upon. What I'd read in the minutes uh from last month's meeting and a lot of the comments that we shared this evening. It, it, it appears to me that this uh marketing firm kind of jumped the gun on this thing maybe. And I, I know a lot of people are saying, uh, there's a lot of misinformation out there and everything. I, I shared this originally on the Facebook group. Just the details so that folks would be aware of it and try to encourage people to attend meetings, not just about this event. I mean, I'm, I'm guilty of that also. I need to show up more often as well. Um, but it, it, it kind of looks like an outside player. Has taken over our conversation about our lives here in Roxbury. And I, again, I just want to applaud the Board of Selectmen for the opening statement tonight, which is. Exploratory stages. We're still researching this. We're still taking comments and we're still looking to uh, uh, find out more information and. Answer the questions that we residents have. So I think if we can all kind of step back and just realize that. This agency kind of did what they did, including posting it on their website. Uh. I didn't see it, but I heard somebody say that they were selling tickets for it already. And I think that's when everybody's hair caught fire. I don't have a lot of hair to catch fire, but I think that's kind of how it, it kind of took on a life of its own. Um, so again, with all appropriate respect and trust from my uh Board of Selectmen and friends. Russ and Kim and Patrick. Thanks again.
Thank you, Trevor. Okay, Meredith, back on.
Hi, I'll be quick. Um, in watching the last video, uh, the minutes and the video were quite different. Um, so that's why I posted the link to the video and Facebook. Um, and then I went back to the meetings with zoning. Um, and I think for, for future, um, like the Board of Selectmen should approve something before it goes to zoning. And their back and forth of who should handle what. Like I said, a committee would be great because then we would have the proper procedures and protocols in place. For the best interest of our town. Um, I'd like to know why Greenwich has this Colonial Car Show. And that they may or may not be re- re- uh renewing this event's permit. Um, it seems like the demographics would be the same, um, and that they would want something there. So I would like to know why that town may or may not. Be permitting this event in their town and what problems or um, gains they've received as a town from this event. Since it's a very large event. And what I heard her say was this could be worldwide, international, and it could be the only one in the state of Connecticut. Meaning that if it's large this year, it will probably be larger in the future if there's no other event in Connecticut for this to take place besides Roxbury. Um, my second question is, or my statement would be is. Um, I was the one who found that it was being advertised at Candlelight Farms. Um, I think that's a three hundred acre facility. Um, so it was supposed to take place July twenty twenty of three at Candlelight Farms. I would like to know how they already knew that they outgrew that venue. I would like to know what the price they paid for that venue to use their land and use their. Um, it, was it the town? Was it um, the person who had the land? Was it a falling out? Was it true that you just can't fit that many cars at the farm? Um, and I think some of those are some apparent questions that need to be answered and that it just wasn't outgrown. Um, and I think we should talk to the city of Greenwich, to the town of Greenwich, to find out why they may or may not be supporting this in their town. Um, and I agree with Trevor's statement. I think that the misinformation is not misinformation. I think we've all come to the conclusion by looking through the minutes and watching the videos to see that this is a front. That this is something that obviously you guys really want to do. And I'm not opposed to the idea of a car show and supporting local events. However, this seems to be a huge event. There's six bar lounges. There's a beer garden. Where are all these people coming from? Where are they going to stay? Where are they driving to through our town when they leave this event? Because there's plenty of places to drink. And what about all the houses around it? And um, I don't know, I just don't feel like that event. Or, I mean, we've had artistic events and stuff like that amongst the meadows. So is that a prelude to what it'll be? Um, and I just don't know if we open it to this marketing group. I understand the past special permit, which. I know another gentleman said that's in the state, but if it's in the state, then why were we even talking about it in zoning and how we're going to handle it with generators? And picking and fiddling and a generator permit um, as a special event permit and that there's no fee for a special event permit. So we're just going to allow it at no cost. Um, and I just don't think that's even fruitful from the get go. For our, our town, if we're not even setting a price on it, if we're going to go through this. So again, those are just some questions I had at the end. Thank you for your time. And like everybody else, I'd like to see where this goes and more questions to be answered from. Um, you know, from outside people who have had this town um, event in their town and see what their feedback is. Um, that's where I feel like we'll get our true answers, whether this is a good fit for our town or not.
Got it. I appreciate your comments again. Uh, Kara is actually uh on the line. Um, but I'm going to be holding off because I think uh, like I said, we're going to answer questions at that time. So I'm not going to give you a chance to speak, Kara. Cause we're going to speak um, because you're actually on the agenda. Um, so we're going to go back to the agenda. I don't see any other hand raised. So I'd like to continue to move through the rest of the regularly scheduled meeting, if that's okay. There's any last comments? I'll give you one last chance. Okay, we will, uh, Paula, you have one quick comment.
Mute. Okay, I have one question. Um, how many? How many cars? I mean, of course, you know, the, the classic cars themselves. How many would be expected? Um, and you know, keep going back to old Roxbury days because I was here then. Um, been in town forty two years. And you know, Roxbury days was run by-
Hey, Pat.
Yeah.
Department. It was run by, it was run by the fire department. They, you know, it was all nonprofits for nonprofits. Um, and almost everybody in town volunteered and people that came were the people that lived out down. So my concern is the num- the volume of vehicles. Um, and the parking situation in those lovely meadows. Um, up at the top of the intersection there of, of um, of Rocky Mountain Road and Willers Bridge Road. My pro- I have a problem with the amount of traffic that those very narrow roads would see. And I just, you know, for the people that live there, eh, having porta toilets and ticket booths and bars. Uh, it, it, this is not a good thing. So.
Muted, but I don't know what happened.
Got to find out how many cars are going to be involved because parking. All right, bye.
I got the question. Perfect. Uh, Holly?
Patrick, thanks. Um, my question echo um, some of what Meredith just um, mentioned specifically about references. Um, I'd asked questions when we had the informational um, meeting um, last week. Um, and echoing what uh Margaret Minor said, a lot of questions about financials. We don't know. What the fire department or EMS will, could even realize out of this. There are so many, so many questions. But I think the references, especially as, as Meredith alluded to, is key. Um. Why are other towns not doing this? What kind of return did they get? What kind of disruption to their town did they experience? Um, Greenwich is a lot bigger place than Roxbury is. New Milford is a lot bigger. Hawks Ridge in Waterbury is a lot bigger than Roxbury. And echoing what a number of other people said, we're a very, very, very small town. It's a good idea to try and raise money for our town organizations. This isn't the way to do it. This is what, this is sort of the monster that ate Europe. Or the monster that ate Roxbury.
All right. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Um, and then Mo and then we'll kind of wrap it up. I think that's the last one we have. You'll have to unmute again.
Can't hear you, Mo.
Yeah, Mo, you're not. You're still on mute.
You're on mute, Mo.
You're still on mute, Mo.
Go to the bottom left. Of your screen.
Okay.
Hear me now?
Yep.
Ken, there you go, Mo. Thank you.
What do you know? I am technologically incompetent, as you can see. Um. As you proceed with your discussion, uh, is there any way, Patrick, that you can show the uh layout of the um, park? So that those who haven't seen it can take a look?
I'll see if I can get that up for the um, will we actually pull that up? Um.
But at, at the time, yeah.
There you go. If you could see that. Fair Apple Lane is down at the left, the uh, or the lower uh, side here.
Could you share your screen?
Yeah.
Well, this is only, this is a piece of paper, so.
Okay, you don't have it on the, on that. Okay.
Oh, there.
There you go.
So there you go. So you'll see Hurl- Hurlbut parked out at the bottom, uh, where the pavilion and the parking lot are. Um, and then, you know, events around the sides. The cars would be in the middle. Uh, and then the parking is in the other uh, fields up on the other side. Towards the top of the screen. Is that good, Mo?
Yeah, that's uh, okay.
And we can, you know, Patrick, you can show that again if we need to during the discussion.
Of course, of course. Did you have another question, Mo? Did you want to add anything? Okay, okay, perfect. All right. I think that's it. Okay, we will continue with our uh, regular Board of Selectment meeting. I really do. I just want to thank everybody for number one, being here, taking an interest in this, taking a, a part in this conversation. Um, this is all, you know, this is wonderful and I appreciate the feedback. So uh, thank you and hopefully uh. We have a, a chance tonight to uh, answer some questions and dispel some of the things that were going around on social media. Um, but we'll continue with the meeting as it goes. Um, next is uh, Board of Selectmen Commission and Board Appointments. Um. We have a, a Conservation Commission. I am uh, going to have to hold that for one more uh, month. So that is not uh, something we can act on today. Uh, but we do have inland uh, Wetlands Commission alternate vacancy expiring.
I'll make a motion at table. I'll make a motion at table, the Conservation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Uh, thank you.
Yep, that's my motion.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Uh, Kim, second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, moving forward, next.
Can Julie uh share the screen just to have that?
Oh, the, the, yeah, that'd be great.
Agenda up. That'd be great.
Perfect. Now we are on new uh inland wetlands uh commission alternate vacancy expiring eight thirty one twenty three. And this is for uh Julie Mangino.
I'll abstain because I'm chairman of the commission.
Okay, then I'm going to make that motion uh pointing Julie Mangino to that position.
Hey, a second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, great. Um, and then uh I Historic District uh Commission Alternate, we, we do not have a permit decision on that, so I'm going to ask to uh place that for one more month.
I'd make a motion for that?
Please.
I make a motion. Postpone that till next month.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Um, and then I would like to uh add another position that is not on the agenda. And this is uh to add Library Board. Um, this is a vacancy expiring uh November twenty first of two thousand and three. So first we need to vote this onto the agenda. If I could get a motion?
I'll make a motion to vote it on the agenda.
Thank you, Russ. And a second is Kim. Thank you, Kim. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And uh, this is to appoint Bruce Smith to that position. This is uh Alan Johnson's role that he has stepped back from. So uh, can I get uh a motion to approve Bruce Smith?
I make a motion to approve Bruce Smith to the Library Board.
Thank you, Kim. In a second?
Second.
Russ, I appreciate it. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? And it goes forward. All right. So uh, the next uh order of business uh on the agenda is the uh demolition delay. Uh, we did have a chance to look with this. Um, this is actually to move from a ninety day to uh match the state requirement to go to a hundred and eighty days. Uh, did you guys have a chance to look that over?
I did.
Because I know we had presented it uh before and you, I was wondering if you guys had any feedback on that or uh any?
What, what are we required to go to a hundred eighty days? Are we required?
No, we're not. This is, this was brought up uh to us by the Historic District Commission uh to move to match state standards or state.
Why, why, why do we need more than three months to tell somebody if they can knock something down that they own and?
Well, I, I think it gives the Historic District a chance to find alternative um solutions to that, whether it can be rehomed. Uh, if it's uh, um, something that's historic and important to the town. Um, ninety days, that, so the state has gone to a hundred and eighty days. And so just cha- making, suggesting that change, not we as a historic district, but in terms of the town to um match what the state.
And this only affects properties in the barn book?
This is all historic, yeah, historically documented homes.
Okay.
So it's Historic District.
Shouldn't we have a public hearing for those people so they could express? Because it affects them. Doesn't affect me. I can knock down my goat barn anytime I want. Uh, I'm just wondering, I, you know, I hate voting for something that affects people and I have no idea whether they even know this is before us. Um, and you know, I wouldn't want to wait six months to knock down something that is on my property.
Okay.
And I, I'm just putting it out there, right?
This would be an amendment to the ordinance, so this would have to go to Town Bowl anyway. Um, it would just take our recommendation if we so choose.
So what, so there will be a public, the public and the people.
Oh, yeah, it would have to be, yes.
Okay.
This is an ord- this is an ordinance change, so this has to go to a town meeting, correct?
Then no, no prob- I don't have an issue bringing it forward then.
And this is.
So that's, yeah.
It's actually something written in there about derelict properties because the building inspector can come through and say, you've got to tear this down and it's okay. So I think these are, they're thinking mostly it's about homes that are in good shape. People just don't want to have them in there anymore and they want to tear them down. Um, and they're just a way to, for them to have a little more time to try and save them.
Okay.
Yep, and it's, these are historically relevant.
Public, public, you know, that the people who are going to be affected know about. And don't find out when they file demolition permit and find out they have to wait a half a year. In another way, it protects our town. Our town is, is in danger in some ways from people moving in who don't really understand the nature of Roxbury and that its natural beauty is what makes it great. And maybe this is one form of protection that, that we need in the future, maybe and don't need it right now. But uh, we, we do need to start looking down the road at things like fences and, and big walls on driveways. And, and Hamptons coming to Roxbury. So I, I have no problem uh moving this forward.
Okay. Okay. And, and I would agree. I would agree. Uh, because it's the historically significant uh makes it, you know, different. It isn't for every house. This is just historically significant uh homes. That they would like the opportunity to try and come up with an alternative if possible. Um, so I'm, I'm in favor of moving this forward as well.
Do you need a motion?
Um, yeah, we would.
Go ahead, Kim.
Why, sure. Uh, I'll make a motion to um move with the demolition delay ordinance and we're gonna, are we scheduling this yet?
Um, there's no rush on it. Um, it was, you know, written up. I've, I, I talked to the Historic District Commission. They, they just kind of want to see it moving forward. This can wait until our next town meeting. Um, and then, of course, that would be a, a public meeting where people could have the ability to, you know, vote in favor and not, and you know, we'll bring it back to the people.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we move forward with the demolition delay ordinance to be scheduled in a future town, for a future town meeting.
I'll suck it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it carries forward. We'll be moving that to a town meeting. Okay, so one thing that's going to come up on this, on this next topic, which is special event permitting. Because this came up in the uh previous conversation. I just wanted to clarify, this is not a zoning special permit. This is just a special event permit. Um, this discussion started long before the car show. Um, it's because we don't have a town special permit process. Uh, even when a church, for instance, uh, has a function, there's no special permit process for it. Um, so it's, go ahead.
Special event permit, because I think.
Event permit.
Special permit, because I'm on zoning. It, it's a whole different process and uh what Rich said was absolutely correct. Um, but this is a whole separate thing, so.
Okay. Um, do you want to talk about this a little bit, Kim?
Just, just not to confuse it, but we do have a process to rent the park, correct?
Correct, we do. We have a rental form for town residents and we have rules and regulations. Um, so this came as uh.
And that, and that is only for town residents. What if you're out of town, you want to have a wedding?
Well, it wouldn't apply because you can't, uh, you wouldn't be renting it if you're an out of town resident. You would have to be a resident to rent it. Um, so yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter.
All right, I, I thought because of a court case that you have to allow non-residents access to your parks. And you could charge them a fee. So I thought that applied here. And I thought, I, I may be mistaken being on the prior board. I thought we gave permits to out of town residents to have weddings.
Out of town, on the park?
On the park.
At the park?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's been always for uh town residents.
All right, then. Guess I'm getting old and forgetting stuff, but um, yeah, and in, in that rental uh ordinance or rental procedure, isn't there at least you could only rent it two weekends a month? So that we're not filling it up every weekend and denying our residents' access?
Correct. That came up through previous Board of Selectment and through previous.
Yeah, that's, that's something I, I.
How many times you rent it? Yep, exactly. That's still there. None, none of that would change. Yeah, I believe it's, yeah, two weekends a month, I believe.
All right. So you're talking about a special permit, which is different. This is for larger events.
No, actually, the, the special event permit, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll do it here. Um, this is just a way to organize things that are happening in town. So that the people in the town hall know what's taking place. So let's say there's a church event, uh, they're going to have uh the barbecue. And they um will just fill out a one pager so that the town knows if the police are going to be needed. Um, that emergency medical people know that there's this event that's taking place and there's no fee for it. Uh, this is not for out of town people, so I'll correct that what came up earlier. This is just to organize information and so that the, as town employees and volunteers know what's coming forward. Um, that's all this is. So it was.
Right, we, we, we did discuss this before.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, all right.
This, this, we've been, we've been talking to this, talking about this for the last six months.
Okay, all right.
Um, and I, you know, there's a, there's a good line on it, um, under I in this, uh, that we have a, a somewhat of a proposed uh special events draft that we've been working on. Um, but determining the adequate number of parking spaces, music sound concerns, traffic control, you know, those kind of situations that really aren't regulated that, you know, we'd have uh, uh, the ability to know what's going on, to your point, Kim, that's.
Yeah.
Um, that's kind of what this is because we don't, if, if you rent a park, you know what this, the time you have to, you know, stop the music. But if it's another function, there's no rules kind of putting to that. So it would kind of match more of the town rental on any property.
Right. And so that, um, what's, what's happening now is it, you know, bringing this to us to talk about. But it's also on the agenda for zoning. So because I know, you know, Patrick, in talking with you, you'd like to make sure that boards and commissions who have some experience in this can weigh in to add anything or make suggestions. So we have this on our agenda for our next zoning meeting. Hopefully we have time to do it because it's a long meeting. But um, and then we'll bring that back to the Board of Selectmen meeting once, once the zoning commissioners weigh in.
Okay. Uh, any other questions or comments on special event permitting?
Nope.
Nope.
We can move on. Um, the next is.
I think it's a good idea. Thank you, Kim.
Uh, and I, I want to get, um, I want to get that question answered, by the way, that you have, Russ. Um, because I think that's a good one uh about out of towners being required because I, that's not something that anyone has brought up yet. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, they won't bring it up till they sue us. But it started about a guy walking down a breach in Greenwich on a Greenwich Park and went to court and the court ruled it may not apply to events, but I know that we, the former board, um, have a, have a sticker for out of towners now if they want to use the parks. And that's where it came from.
I, I just want to say something too, that uh, this was John Cody is one of the instigators of this special event permit, and I think it's a great idea. So.
But it has nothing to do with him knowing somebody hasn't seen it for thirty nine years, right? I mean, it didn't come about at all from the.
This, this discussion started long before we were talking about a car show.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Right.
Yep. So, and, and that parking permit that you can get as an outer towner, that's, as of now, it's been, you can go to the parks. You can go to Chase Park or, you know, down by the falls or, or anywhere else. Um, this is, it's, it to rent the, 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 the park itself and the pavilion, that's always been just residence. So um, that's the difference of that. So, but I, I think it's a good legal question that we should bring up if we're going to put it in this.
Yeah.
Policy. I want to make sure that it.
I, I know I could rent in Fairfield on a beach, a pavilion on a beach that, uh, being from Roxbury. So.
Okay.
Just.
Yeah, it's a good, very good question.
It's a different fee, but I could still do it. So I'm wondering if, why they do that.
Yep.
Okay. It's a great point and we will continue this discussion. I'm uh, uh, thank zoning uh commission for uh taking this on as well. It's a, yeah, definitely a good move. Um, okay, so the next thing was uh textile recycling. Um, Kim, you had had me add this and I did a little bit of research and I spent some time with Albert up at the transfer station. Um, and why don't you give us a little basis of, since there's so many people on the call, what this is about?
Yeah, this is great. We have an audience. We're usually the three of us.
Correct.
So uh, I've been collecting all of my old clothes and putting up the base of a closet because I don't want to add them to the uh, the waste stream. Uh, and trying to find out ways, because that's a huge part of a, a waste management issue that they're having is that it's majority of the um, the items that go in are old clothing and uh book bags, all kinds of things that are fabric rugs. And so there are two bins at the transfer station and I uh took a picture of it and I was talking to Albert and said, what are these for? I mean, are they both for clothes that are wearable, that can be donated and used again, or what is it? So I looked up, I think it was Bay State, looked up the other one.
Yeah, Bay State Textiles.
They do recycling of textiles to use, uh, have other uses. So my questions were, how often do they pick up? Um, we, no one knows about it. So are they just putting in good clothes into those, that, in that one bin? And we need to do a better job of advertising uh if that's available to us. And, and Albert said that they pick up fairly regularly, but I.
They do. They've been great. Red Cross, uh, the other bin uh has been uh tough to get emptied when it needs to be. Uh, Bay State Textiles has been a great partner. It's somebody that we've established this with before and they do believe in textile recycling. So they will mill up whatever, you know, old clothes or anything. So if it's not salvageable, that's all being brought back into the stream.
Okay, so I think we just need to figure out a way to, I think it needs signage, you know, on the bin because it doesn't say anything about what they do. So if we can put something there that's more clearly defines the use and, and put it out, you know, on the email blast or, you know, the newsletter. Um, I think that would be great.
Got it. I can do that. All right. Anything else on textile? All right, we'll continue moving on. Uh, so we are on uh the Colonial Concorde. So uh Kara, I'm going to pull you back into this. Um, how are you today? Why don't you introduce yourself? Tell us a little bit about who you are and hopefully we can start going through some of these questions. I have a, a bunch written down, so.
Sure. Um, hi, everybody. Thanks for letting me be part of the meeting. Um, first and foremost, I want to address a correction and clarification. Um, on your minutes, it says the Colonial Concorde Elegance event, and then the Classic Cars and Critters. The Colonial is a separate event that we already own and produce. This would actually be a new Concorde, the Roxbury Concorde Elegance. Um, the Colonial has been in existence for four years. I have produced Concorde San Rojo for over ten years in Los Angeles. I've been very active on Pebble Beach, Amelia Island. Uh, my event director ran Greenwich Concorde for twenty years as the field operations. We all work up at Lime Rock at the Historics, which is very different. Um, it's a wonderful event and it's a big event. Um, a Concorde Elegance is not your traditional car show. It is an elevated experience. Um, it is a higher end event. We, however, produce events that are much more inclusive and family friendly, less elite. The other thing that I do want to clarify is there was a comment made up about um, in one of the meetings, we were talking about the Greenwich Concorde. I'm very, very familiar with Greenwich Concorde. I actually consulted to it for a long time through Hagerty Insurance. And the Greenwich Concorde has been along, been around for a long time. It was started by a group of four men. Um, and uh unfortunately, I want to say almost seven years ago, Bruce, who was the original founder of the Concorde, passed away and his daughter took over running the Concorde. Um, and didn't have the same um, je ne sais quoi, didn't have the same vibe that Bruce and his. Genesee Qua, didn't have the same vibe that Bruce and his people did when they first built it. She chose to, to sell the Greenwich Concorde to Hagerty Insurance, who took it over um, during COVID, actually. Um, the town Greenwich has always loved it. Uh, when Hagerty purchased the event, because it was Hagerty now owning the event versus a organization called the Greenwich Concorde, the town came back and asked Hagerty, would they consider giving a large donation to the town because the history of the event grew at the park where it's held, at Roger Sherman Park. And as a result, there were things at the park that now would be great if they could be modified and improved upon. And as a new owner to this event, would Hagerty entertain that? Hagerty has not committed to do so. Unfortunately, the handover in operations from Mary to Hagerty was not smooth, so there were some operational difficulties that transpired the last two events and the town, um, cut back on the duration of the event, so that's why there's a, a little lieu of jeopardy there. Um, but the Colonial event is very different from the Roxbury event. Um, the Colonial event is held at Candlelight Farm, yes, correctly. And yes, we do have tickets for sale, oh, for that, not for the Roxbury because this is still under development.
Correct, just to be clear, no tickets have been sold for this event, this was literally just to see if there was any interest. That was where this was, correct?
Right, the Colonial tickets, yes, are for sale, but Roxbury is not for sale yet, we haven't started to advertise it or promoted.
Can we go through some of the questions that kinda came up, like how many cars are we expecting?
Yeah. Um, so basically, when you take into consideration the property that you're gonna be having a concor at, it's not like a car show where they're, are in each parking spot next to each other, there actually has to be six to ten feet in between each vehicle. Um, and in some cases, we stank, we stanchion off the vehicles if they're extremely rare. Um, we we estimate that because the cars are smaller unless you get into the larger, the more post-war, you know, you could easily accommodate three hundred on display there. Um, again, but you don't wanna cram them in, it's about creating the proper experience. And you also just don't wanna take any car in, it has to qualify, it has to be absolutely the original chassis, original parts, authentic parts for restoration, and they have to be.
Kara, could we, could we get to the point, because we got a long meeting, so the question is how many cars? The people here, you know, they have things to do and so how many cars?
We could easily accommodate three hundred cars there.
Three hundred, okay, that's good, and, um, what, what happens if the event gets overfilled? Is there a contingency in place to shut down the event? So no for, so no, nobody else could get in if the park.
You cannot, you are not allowed on the concor field unless you have been approved. You have to be pre-approved to participate.
No, I'm talking about people who attend.
Oh.
They are parked, that is why there's separate parking for the event. And the event, the event in general.
People sold tickets online will be allowed to attend that event, will be tickets being sold at the event?
There will be tickets being sold at the event as well.
Okay, so what's the contingency if we get overcrowded? Is there?
Um, if there, if there's an overcrowding of, of people in the park, we would definitely stop ticket sales. That, that would take away from the experience of anyone attending the event, participating in the event, and even vendors at the event. So we put, we pay close attention to that. It's just like, somebody had referred to it as a, uh, Led Zeppelin concert, we don't even have that kind of music at our events. Um, it's very family friendly. Jazz in the morning and country slash blue grassy kind of stuff in the afternoon, and everybody's out by five o'clock except for the people that are going to the dinner.
So there's a, nobody's gonna be camping there after it closes?
Right, no, the only people overnight are, are overnight security people and our audio guy who mans the equipment to make sure it's secure.
So. I'm sorry, I was just going through questions, but you can answer another ques- another question.
No, it's okay, I'm, I think, you know, you, you guys have had a meeting, uh, that Russ and I were not at, um, because, you know, the planning or just a information meeting with some other people, so I think we need to be brought up to speed. I didn't see a map until someone called me this morning and tell me that there was a map posted on Facebook. So there's still a lot of this presentation that is, um, missing from uh, Russ and me, and I think that, that's important, so, you know, I was a bit concerned when I saw, uh, was not a clear map and, um, I didn't realize last month, no one spoke about using the other two town fields, so, or I missed it. Uh, I just wanna be clear on the things that are expected, uh, going forward with this. I, I just don't feel like I have, I'm missing a lot of the.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe what we should do is have a public hearing where uh, Kara, after all she's hurt tonight, can prepare and, and give a presentation to anybody who's interested, and it should be a hybrid, so you could go in person, be- because there's a lot, too many questions.
I, I agree, okay.
I agree.
And we'll be here all night trying to.
Patrick and most of us. I agree because whenever we do work with municipalities, that's what we do do. Um, and it, what I like to do beforehand is even work with the fire marshal, meet with fire, the police, meet with this, this state troopers, so that I literally have everything that is needed to be answered already vetted with the parties that need to be worked with to make sure it happens. And so that we can come up with plan A, plan B, and plan C. The nice thing about these events, and I'll be very clear about these, is they are great events, they're wonderful. There's no one spinning wheelies, there's no one being obnoxious and out of control. It's, it's a wonderful experience and they can range in size. Missilewood only has a hundred cars and it raises hundreds and thousands of dollars for scholarships for Endicott College. So if, it's a matter of having it eloquent, elegant and classy and having something for everybody.
But you missed one word there, rural.
What'd you say, rural?
Rural, yeah, woodsy, woodsy here.
I grew up in Southbury, I know what that is.
Alright, so the problem if you've been listening to the people, which I am, because I rep, I represent them uh, for a long time, the concern that this is too big an event for this town. On the other hand, I'm on the fence in a lot of ways because I support our EMS and our fire department and it initially, when I heard about this, it did seem like a no-brainer, but and then you find out some more details, like three days, three days, I need to consider the people who live around that. Uh, that, that's a lot to go through, three days, and I, I, just so you don't go forward, Kara, and you know, waste a lot of time, I could never support a three-day event at Apple Lane Park. It's not the right place for that kind of event. It, I, I mean, why? Do you know, the questions that come to my mind is why Roxbury for that kind of event, I'm, I'm love it, I love these kinds of events, but these events have to be sized to what this town could handle. You know, our, our tractor parade doesn't go down or every street in town and we, we allow floats and stuff. We're a small town, we, we wanna remain a small town, and this event seems a, a little too big for me. And, and again, I'm listening to people and I know Kim, Kim's a great listener and she's a great thinker and Patrick is doing an awesome job as our first selectman, I want everybody to know that. And we work really well together and, and so we're not gonna there's a lot of information, I have a lot of questions, I just don't want you to go forward thinking that, yeah, you're gonna do a great presentation and we're gonna go for it. I, I, I know that people who live around the park, you chose to live around the park and it's great when nothing's going on at the park. But you've been very patient with what goes on at the park, but I think this is going over the top a little and I'm concerned about that, very concerned about it, very concerned about parking, very concerned about our town being a, a, in a traffic jam for three days. Um, I, I, I'd I'd need a lot of convincing to, to really wanna support this, and the only reason why I'm open is, uh, Todd Wheeler and Sarah, you know, they're for it, I wanna hear them out. I, I don't wanna take money out of anybody's hand who, who gives so much to our town, so I'm open, I just the three-day thing bothers me, I just wanna say that.
So it doesn't, it's not theoretically three days, Friday is a rally and there's a opening night reception for the people that are participating in the competition. There's nothing that goes on at the field, it's just set up and then we have a two-hour reception at the close of a rally. It doesn't have to be a two-day competition, it could be made into one, we've done that as well. The, the thought of it being a two-day, again, is you're not jamming everything in, it's a little more relaxed, the experience is a little more chill. Uh, I think the guests participate deeply, more deeply, and they're more engaged with it. The other reason why if you have it two days, the setup is there, you actually get to rev, make more revenue on a two-day event, while the cost of that is gonna be the same as producing a one-day event.
I thought it was a three-day event, I thought it was a three-day.
The rally is on Friday evening.
Okay, so it's Saturday and Sunday when all the people come?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, and like I said, you could compress it into one day, we've done that, we had to do it with, with COVID and I ran Congress on Rodeo, that way every Father's Day. But the logic behind doing a two-day is it creates a much more relaxed atmosphere. Um, also, because the cost of setting it up for one day is the same as having it for two days, but your revenue and the ability to raise more money for your charities is doubled, if not tripled that way. That's all, but it's very flexible.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, um, the, uh, having a public forum, I think we're in agreement, uh, that's the best way to go.
Completely.
I think we, uh.
And, and the questions people have, you know?
Yeah.
Make sure.
Okay, so Kara, would you, would you feel, yeah, or would you have, um, I'm thinking, uh, the twenty-second of February here at Town Hall. Um, it's, uh, Wednesday, two weeks, how does that look for everyone?
We can make that work.
Would you have enough information, time to put the financial information, I'm not sure if you have any of that? Oh, yes, yeah. Uh, if you wanna share any of that real quickly, um, about, you know, how much is gonna go to the organization or how much we're gonna charge to get in or any of that stuff quick, or do you wanna?
So I can go over some of the basic pricing right now, or we can wait. Um, there are basically several charity ver- um, verticals to the event. So there's silent auction, there's an actual auction, there's the rally fees, the rally fees that come from the rally on Friday go all directly to the charity. And even if you only had thirty-five cars in that rally, that's seven thousand dollars right there. Um, there's a fifty-fifty raffle, which is all cash, again, that goes to the charity. Uh, there's direct donations because charities would have representation at the event, and of course, we would always be suggesting direct donations. Um, Ron from Mine Hill had a beautiful idea because we work with USA Waste. We leave the grounds better than we get them because we're pretty strict about that. Um, but the recyclables could also go towards benefiting the charities. And then the last vertical, and in this year is difficult because we just don't know what the count would be, what the attendance would be, we could we could suggest a flat amount, you know, whether it's another five, seven thousand or a percentage of the gate, whichever is greater, so there are one, two, three, four, there's eight seven, eight different fundraising verticals within the event. And not to mention just the direct donations that people can do while they're attending the event. Right now, general admission is priced at ten dollars a person, children under twelve are free. All first responders, all veterans are half price. If you are wanting to be part of the car corral, which is, you have a nice car, but you just don't feel its concor quality, it's thirty dollars. VIP admission, which includes everything, is sixty-five a day. There's a dinner afterwards, which is sixty-five, you can have a full weekend pass. Entering applications to compete, um, are sixty-five dollars for a concor competition and then forty-five for the thirty under thirty, trying to get the next generation of car enthusiasts to get involved with the concor experience. Um, and then the car clubs are just like the crowd, they're thirty. Rally participants are two hundred dollars per car for two people, if there's another person in the car with them, it's another hundred dollars. Again, that's a straight donation to the charity, we don't take any of that. Um, you know, we have different vendor pricings, food booths, food truck pricings. Um, we would be doing a small advertising book to give credit to the people that are in the competition and also hopefully recognize some of the merchants that are involved and around in the community. Um, and then sponsors, and sponsors this year are gonna be a little bit tricky because it is the first year and years generally in history, um, sponsors are, they wait for the, the second or third time to come around, so we don't rest on laurels on that very much. Um, as far as insurance, we, every event venue, anywhere, or most parks, they'll carry, they'll request that you carry a five hundred thousand or a million dollar policy. We always carry a two million dollar policy. On top of that, two million dollar policy, we take out an additional event insurance policy so that there are two layers of liability coverage. So, um, I have that answered some of.
Yep, couple of quick other things that I had for questions, where will people stay?
So I've already reached out to the Heritage, the Mayflower, uh, the Winnebagoan, um, the Wyndham. Uh, there's another place in, um, New Milford, there's like a small inn, to see that, should we move forward with this? Would they be willing to give discount rates or, you know, blocks to some of the people coming for the event? And, uh, and all, we're very excited. It's a good time of year because it's after Labor Day, so it's a little more workable.
Three more other questions, uh, who handles the parking organization, traffic and security?
So we work with, um, um, Valley USA, a valley parking company, they're based out of Springfield. They do all the parking for all the hospitals, medical facilities, including the Milford and Danbury. They also provide the shuttle services for those hospitals, they provide all of our parking and all of our shuttling. Um, they are also insured on top of our insurance. Uh, we then work with our own private security. Um, we usually have twelve to fourteen officers, and then we also hire the local law enforcement and work with the state troopers to correctly direct traffic, they are paid to do so. Um, and if they wanna do overtime pay, we, we totally welcome that as well, too.
Perfect, um, for the forum, can we have, based on, you know, whatever your projections are of ours, can, can we put some projections of what our organization, so um, it's obviously to benefit the fire department and ambulance, um, what those projections of finances would be, would we have, be able to do some kind of projections for the forum?
I could only do it on what we did if we did like ticket tallies. Um, but you know what, I can go back and like based on what we've done with other auctions and and like fifty-fifties and stuff, I can actually add to that, that would be.
Obviously, the more information, the better, there's a lot of questions out there, so the more that we would do. Um, and also, uh, only because it was brought up, um, like about the Boy Scouts and stuff, are we gonna have opportunities for other organizations? You know, the rec, you know, uh, maybe four H or, uh, Chapag or any of those organizations, um, that could get involved and also uh, use this as a fundraiser as well?
Yeah, we always welcome that.
Okay, um, alright, so, uh, if that's, do you, by the way, are you guys good with the, uh, twenty-second if we held a public, public forum?
Yep.
Yeah. Patrick, would that be? Yeah, it's gonna be seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock at Town Hall.
Okay.
It's kind of our time, because seven-thirty is too late.
Yeah.
Um.
And also, you know, just to include.
Beyond my bedtime. I'm up early.
Visuals, like the map, you know.
Correct, yeah.
We'll do a full presentation.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I did run through a lot of questions. Kim, Ross, do you have more questions that you need, uh, answered right away?
No, but I would like the questions that people post tonight to be answered at the forum.
Absolutely.
Cuz I think there'll be people who couldn't make it tonight.
Yeah, and, and for people, and other comments that were made, which may be true or not true, I'd like it just to. Ease anybody's, um, fears if there's no fears to be had.
And you can reach out to me. People have been reaching out to me all day. Um, and please feel free to do so. I'm getting back to as many as I possibly can, and but I will get back to everybody as soon as I can. Um, to hopefully answer what, what questions I know anyhow. So Kara, I thank you very much. Uh, we will see you on the twenty second of, uh, February. Uh, and we will continue this con- conversation, and I encourage everyone to, uh, to be there and, uh, and, and, uh, you know, help us get through this. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate everybody's time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, okay, so that's it. So, uh, on to our next thing, which is a, um, uh, two things, actually. Um, I was approached, and this was brought up in the last month or so, the Airstream Club. Um, part of this was to try to do some more, you know, social kind of events. So, um, if you guys are familiar, um, it's Bill Steers, uh, who does Tractor Mac. Uh, he also belongs to an Airstream Club, uh, and they would like to put some Airstreams, um, uh, for a weekend at Muntz and Meadow. Um, and he's asked if, uh, we could do this. Uh, if they did, it'd probably be ten to fifteen. They're completely self-contained. They would need nothing. There's no electric, no anything. Um, and then they would open time throughout the day, uh, like a, a window that people can come visit and they could check out the Airstreams. So this isn't at the park at all. Um, this is actually right across the street at Muntz and Meadow. Uh, I think that's a great field over there, and we don't necessarily utilize it all that well. Um, so again, I'd like to, uh, bring this up for discussion, which is, uh, a different event, but it is another event. Um, cuz that is the goal, to get people involved, so, um, and, and that's something that people ask, so here we are.
Okay, so could you just tell, just say what, um, is it for two nights? What, one is a Friday and Saturday, Saturday and Sunday?
It would be, it would be, um, it's the second to the fourth, so they show up Friday night and leave Sunday.
Okay, so.
Of June.
Uh, the, oh, of June. It might be.
It made me think, when's the pop-up pub?
Oh, that's Friday.
This Friday.
I'll be there.
I'll, I'll meet you there, Ken.
We do love these events, don't we? Well. And, and you know, honestly, we've had, uh, more interest in this as, you know, we're kind of breaking out of that COVID. Cycle, and now there's more things that are coming, and, and our town is no different than any other where people wanna do stuff, and we have a beautiful town. So, you know, it's gonna be up to, uh, us to determine whether, you know, it's, it's where we wanna go or not.
That's Friday at six?
No.
The pop-up pub we're still talking about?
Yeah, that's all I care.
It's actually, see, I know this, it's five thirty to eight.
Okay.
Well, I'll see you at five thirty. Um, okay, so the, uh, the Airstream, what's the purpose of this?
Just something cool to do in the park across the street. Um, it's one of them, it's, you know, somebody that's local to us, um, that has been involved in the Airstream, uh, club for a while. They do these clubs around. Um, and they would just be completely, you know, self-contained. There's no security, there's no parking, there's no, nothing that would be required.
So they've just come, cuz because they do this, they drive around.
Correct.
Park in different.
This is the, uh, Wally Biem Airstream Club. It's the International Airstream Club.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to get a handle on, on the why of it, so. Um. And so then, what, on Saturday, they would open it up to?
Correct, they would have a few hours of a window that would be open for anybody from the public to go check them out. They're kind of a cool thing, and it's, uh, very much a trendy thing, actually. Um, Airstreams have become very trendy.
Yep, yep, very retro, so. I don't know, I, I.
This is a tough night to have this on the agenda.
It is, oh my god, this is. Um, I'm kind of ambivalent about it. I, you know, I.
Kim, you're a thinker. You need more time to think.
No, no, I can, I can do this fast. It's just that I, I don't really have an, much of opinion on it. Either, either way, it's ten to fifteen of them. I'm concerned about the, the, uh, the meadow being wet in June, cuz it's often wet. And they might not be able to move around in there well. I, I think that could be an issue, you know, for where July and dry. It'd probably be easier. Um, I'm just concerned about that. I don't wanna be.
Never know with weather.
Pulling them out, you know?
Remember to July, all it did was rain.
Yeah, 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 oh, true.
Yeah.
Had a lot of grass.
Last summer, we didn't have any rain, so.
Yep, yep, yep.
Sounds like a cool event. I don't know why it would have any kind of negative impact.
I mean, they're gonna be in there parked. They'll be pulling in once, pulling out once.
Correct.
Go back and forth. I don't know.
It would bring something, I mean, the only thing that we really do, uh, at Muntz and Meadow is, is the tree lighting.
Yeah. And it's, you know, would bring, um, you know, business to the store, for sure. I'm sorry, you guys can't, we, we can't have you talk. It's, I'm sorry. Um, so, um.
I, I'm gonna make the decision to, I'd like to, uh, ask if we could just table these. Let's get through the concor. And let's get through the forum. I, I don't know that this is, uh, the, the right night to do this, uh, to have this conversation. We can, and we can talk about other events also at the forum. Um, so, cuz I'd like to get more input on it.
I think that's a better idea. I'm really not sure how I feel about it, so.
Okay.
One, so.
Okay, then, uh, if you guys are okay with it, let's just table that for another month.
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect. Um, okay, F on the agenda is, uh, required, uh, commission training. This is a, uh, requirement. Uh, we've been talking about it for a little while. I just wanted to give an update that it was sent out to all commissions. Um, all required commissions, so wetland zoning, um, they have to take state-required mandated training. Um, and that has to happen, uh, basically by the end of two thousand twenty-three. So, uh, that, the information was sent out to all the commissions. There's several different courses. Uh, some are, you have to pay for, some are free. Um, so, you know, we're gonna open to it, and the town will take care of whatever that, uh, requirement fee is for that course. Um, but that was literally just for information session, just, yes, Kim.
Oh, if you fit, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, we're good. I saw your hand go up, I stopped.
That's okay, no, no, no. Um, so it's not wetlands, I don't believe, right? So it's just planning.
Oh, no, wetlands is the reason for this law.
Why?
Developers, developers claim people on boards are not trained, and our legislators listen to it. Like volunteers don't give enough time, that we sit for four hours and be told, you know, how to. Let developers have their way, basically. And no offense to developers out there, I, I, I love a lot of you. But the state development union is really having an effect on our legislators. And so we have to take four hour training every year.
So you have to do it, and you, you've had to do this before, so we're just the new ones that have to come on, the zoning, planning and ZBA.
No, we never had to do it. Wetlands has, has a certification course that we don't have to take. It's not mandatory, but at least one member in the, in the, uh, wetland enforcement officer have to take it and pass. Luckily, oh, everybody on our commission is certified, cuz it's a fun thing to do. Uh, but this, this just tacks on to what a volunteer has to do. It might be good. I, I have to keep an open mind, but I hate when, uh, the legislator keeps tacking things on volunteers.
There are some, um, that, of the trainings, this is before it was mandate, mandated. That the Northwest Hills Cog that has provided on those fifth Thursdays, and they've been really, really helpful. You know, different, um, uh, understanding, uh, Robert's Rules, you know, how to run a meeting. Just things as a new commission member, that, they are helpful, but, you know, thankfully, this is gonna be every other year, which is good. The thing that I wanted to just bring up, because I did, I participated in the first, uh, training session offered by Yukon Clear. Uh, last, uh, Thursday, I think it was, and I signed up for the other two. So they've, for this first one, they said free, and there were two hundred and sixty people on it, on the Zoom meeting. At the bottom of the, of their advertising for these three, it says that it's up to the town. Uh, Board of Selectmen or Council to determine when commission members have met the requirement of the four credit hours. And, um, it says for each of the three that I'm gonna do, it's one credit hour each, but at the end of this, it said that. And we're spending, actually, this first one was supposed to be an hour and a half, and it went two hours. So it'll be five hours worth of time, so I'm gonna be, you know, there were four of us from zoning that were on that. And I'm gonna be recommending that those three count as the four, so just, I just want you to know ahead of time.
We'll decide that at the end of the year.
We'll decide that at the end of the year, but, um, you know, so anyway, I just want you to be.
Tonight.
Yeah.
No, I think it's, I think it's important. There is no training for this, uh, for any of these commissions. So, I mean, I don't think it's a horrible thing. I think it's tough, it gets mandated, you know, with, you know, another unfunded, funded mandate. And we do have volunteers that put a lot of time in, and that's an extra thing, but I'm sure, I'm hoping it's gonna be valuable, and it's gonna be worth it at the end, so.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so that's out there. Uh, item G on the agenda, medic four. Um, right now, uh, the lawyer has the, uh, agreement, and we are still, um, with our other towns of, you know, Washington, Bridgewater, Kent, Warren. Um, and we are still at, uh, an estimated ninety-six thousand a year for our medic. Uh, services as it stands right now, which is obviously a huge inflation over our previous years.
Wow, it's gonna give you a heart attack.
It, I have this big thing of thumbs over here, which I used today. Um, I buy it from Costco. So Ross, yes, that's, it's been fun.
Wow.
You deal with things your way, uh, just. Um, oh, okay, so, uh, bridges and culverts, there's not much happening here, uh, in the wintertime with, uh, bridges and culverts. Um, we're still online with, uh, repairs, uh, and rebuilding as opposed to replacing for weekly. Judd's Bridge, Century Hill, and even Shalabees, which I'm very excited with. Um, Public Works, we're going to be, uh, working on Grassy Hill and Bacon, uh, as well as several different culverts on, uh, Bacon. Um, but that's about it where we stand. They actually just started doing, uh, this week, uh, test borings on Wellers Bridge. That's still a couple of years out, but, uh, the state is starting to take some of their soil testing and do some of their preliminary tests. Uh, so we're still working with them on that, uh, still not costing us a thing. Uh, on to, uh, the next topic, uh, is I, uh, budget capital expense. Um, completed all of our prices. I ended up getting five, uh, prices for, uh, the pole barn, getting the electrical in that and putting in a service. Uh, we've now hired, uh, Walker Electric, uh, and that's gonna be continuing. Um, and actually, uh, one thing that I didn't mention, uh, we did have a, uh, minor bridge. The culvert did go out to bid. Uh, that will be happening this summer, um, and we did have, uh, TD and Sons, uh, that was awarded that bid. Um, so the pole barn's starting, uh, they're in the process of rebuilding loader number two currently. Um, that's our Public Works crew, who is absolutely amazing. They've literally stripping every piece of metal. This is the loader that's up at the transfer station, uh, that we decided to do ourselves. Uh, if you see anybody that's from Public Works, please give them a pat on the back. They're doing a heck of a job down there, and I'm very, very proud of what they're accomplishing. Um, right after the loader gets done, uh, we're gonna start on the back loft construction, uh, at Public Works. Uh, as well, we're gonna put a second floor up for more storage. Um, we did, uh, receive the new Ford F-six hundred, a new twenty-three, um, Ford. So, uh, currently, truck number five, uh, with Sander and with Plow is being, uh, uh, it's out on bid of municipal. Uh, we had had an original trade-in value of fourteen-five, uh, and right now, I think last time I checked, we're at seventeen-five, uh, municipal. So we're definitely gonna make some money on that, which is great. Um, and the rebuild of truck eight, uh, should be getting it by the end of this week, and I'm very excited. That's been a, a long, long time coming, um, and that's gonna just be completely rebuilt, so I'm very, very excited in what they're, what they're doing. Uh, any questions on that stuff?
No.
Okay. Um, on to Fire Marshal Report, uh, and Resident Trooper Report. Um. New codebooks, uh, Knox Box Forms have been ordered for two thousand twenty-three. Plus, there was also that mentioned in the newsletter about Knox Boxes, and three temporary liquor permits were signed off for town events. Um, Resident Trooper Report, uh, three criminal, non-criminal investigations. One accident investigation, foreign fractions, eight warnings, and two hundred and twenty-seven miscellaneous, uh, requests for service. Um, we have been getting a little bit more creative. Uh, David Buck is about to start any day now, which is great, our new officer. Um, Jason D'Souza has been adding shifts, because we're really low on our shifts count. We haven't been able to spend nearly what we've, uh, were projecting. Um, so he's been picking up shifts before his shift, so you're gonna see him around four, five o'clock in the morning, uh, doing sur- surveillance on some of our roads. It got, having great feedback on it. Um, but I think it's a lot of those off-hours that really, really need to, uh, focus on to drive, uh, some of the behaviors. But, uh, I have seen it, it does seem to make a little bit of, uh, of a difference. Um, and that's it, on to, uh, other business, so, um.
I'd like to add something on the agenda, if I can.
Yeah, I think you're gonna add the same thing that I was gonna add, so go ahead, Russ.
Okay. Um, Wellis Bridge Road, Wellis Bridge Road.
Yep, that's it, go for it.
Well, I'll make a motion to add Wellis Bridge Road to the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Now, I'm not bringing this up because I wanna start up Wellis Bridge Road again, cuz I don't. I think the vote was clear that we're done with speed bumps, speed tables, and, uh, reading all the comments is more police. And less stuff, and then you do things like put the strip down the middle, which isn't anybody's fault. I mean, that contract was signed two years ago and put the rumple strip down the middle. They were supposed to do South Street and, uh. Squire, and thank God you stopped them, Patrick.
I, I can't imagine if that had gone through.
Right, cuz they're too narrow roads. So Chris Brigham asked me, cuz I, I go way back with Chris. A long time with Chris and Wendy, and they're good people, and, um. And he asked me to come over and spend some time with him, and I guess he climbed this pine tree to. Put up some Christmas lights. She used to see this tree. Um, and when he was up there, he realized the problem with the noise in the rumple strips is the road isn't really aligned. Showed me a video, uh, you could hear it when we were in the house, and it's a twenty foot. Maybe thirty foot long area where people do tend to go on the strip. After the stop sign, if you're heading onto Wellis Bridge Road. From Church Street, straight ahead, uh, even if you're coming from North Street. Uh, that, they seem to hit it a lot, cuz it's narrow there and the lines don't match up. And then he told me down on the other end, uh, Mike's house, um, what's his name?
Mike and Jessica Patterson.
Yeah.
Just up, the first house, basically, after the bridge.
They have the same problem, so I drove down there and hung out by River Road, and yeah, everybody come around the corner, hits it.
Everyone.
Yeah, so I know that we don't wanna spend sixty thousand dollars doing the whole road. That makes no sense. And we're gonna have to pave the road within the next five years. I think the bottom part may need paving sooner. It's starting to really heave. Um, around that corner, it gets bumpy. But I thought I'd bring it to the board, and I know Chris has talked to both of you about this, that I thought it wouldn't be a bad idea to get a price. To do, uh, just do from the bridge to the Pattersons and do from where Wellis Bridge. Road starts at the church to the first driveway. And I, I, I know that that may bring out some people saying, well, I hear it at my house, and I hear it at my house. And if that's the case, then the hell with it, is what I said. But, hey, you know, hanging with Chris for that short time. Um, and I, I did go down the road during the day and hung out. I know people are looking at me like, what's that guy doing? Um, and I didn't see the problem anywhere else on the road. It's where it begins and is.
I would. I, I hate to comment. I I hate to comment on this too much, because I obviously have a vested interest. Um, I live there. Um, and I I hear it. I am one that will open my windows in April and they will not close until October. Um, I always live with my windows open. It, I can't stand it. It drives me crazy. Um, so I I I will say there's one other spot you're missing, because I've micromanaged this street. Um, there is that first part by um where it hits uh Church Street and Wellers Bridge and South Street meet. Um, there's also that corner by, if you know where Hardee's are, or just going down from Hemlock and Rocky Mountain, where you go around that other corner. Um, I would put that on the list as well, because anytime where you go around a corner, people are clipping that corner, and I and I know they are just as maybe not as vocal, but just as frustrated and fed up with it. Um, so I can get a price on.
Get a price to do that, and then.
Yes, that's what I'm doing. So we're looking at like, you know, a couple hundred feet, a couple hundred feet, and a couple hundred feet, right?
I don't know if it's a couple hundred feet. I think it's fifty feet, fifty feet, fifty feet. It's not really that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think um up by Church Street, it's, you go down past the Daleys driveway. You know, I think it's not just the first driveway. It's like the first two or three.
Right, right, and then, well, then it's a straightaway and they're aligned at that.
And the road widens a little bit more there, too, and the center line is more centered in the road, where it's more balanced. I think that's a little bit of it as well, but I would, I would definitely, okay, so uh for the next meeting.
And if it's a lot, then, you know, we tried, we're listening, we're trying. It wasn't us that did this.
I I, that's why I was happily kicking in to kick them out of town. I, and I'm sorry that that even happened to them, because you you know what? You brought it up well, and I, again, I don't want to belabor this point. Um, they didn't, the people of the road didn't ask for it. And I think that's where, you know, we we had, you know, the 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 speed bumps, we're trying things, but then we're throwing it back to public opinion, just just like having a car show. Uh, we're gonna bring it, we're gonna bring it to the people, and we're gonna let them decide, and we're gonna keep bringing ideas. I can guarantee it. Um, that's what we're here to do, so, um, okay, so I'll get some prices out and uh we'll see if we can fit that in and 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 we can have another discussion about that next month.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, I have something uh that I would like to add. Um, it's on the IRS uh uh mileage reimbursement, so I'd like to add that to the agenda.
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Perfect. Um, so this year, we're going to have to move, just because the reimbursement rate uh rate went up um to sixty-five fifty per mile from fifty-eight fifty per mile. Um, and this would be budgeting for two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second.
All right, any questions? Any, uh, anybody opposed? All all in favor? That's what I'm trying to say, all in favor.
Hi.
Okay, I, all opposed? All right, perfect. All right, anything else? Any other business?
I have.
Yes, Kim.
I I attended the um Board of Ed meeting. I just wanted to kind of make a, do I have to bring that, put that on the agenda, or?
Are you making a comment or something we gotta vote on?
No, I'm just making a comment.
No, you can make a comment.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh, you know, it was my first meeting uh with the new superintendent and everything went fine, but they were talking about, two different committees talking about uh the budget, the upcoming budget, and in both cases, they made comments about the uh, and I don't have my notes in front of me, because I was gonna quote their terminology, but the incredible uh budget that's beating high numbers that are gonna come our way through the three towns. So they made reference to the fact that I was in attendance as a select person in town or from one of the towns, and just to like, you know, be aware that these are costs that they have no control over, uh, and that the budget is going to be high. So I'm just bringing that up.
State mandates, right?
Well, it's the, it's just salaries, uh, comp- salaries of compensation, there's uh fuel charges, there's, you know, things that they don't have any um, that that are set fees.
Right, but one thing they do have control over is how many administrators they have working there. And do you need all those admin- administrators? And I may be wrong. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, my dad was the superintendent and he complained about it all the time. And I see, I see it up there, but on the other hand, um, it's a wonderful school system, and the teachers there are just unbelievable. They're just, they're my best friends. They they helped me raise my kids, so I don't want to throw dirt at them.
No, but I just wanted you guys to be aware.
Got one kid to go.
What I heard, you know, and they, again, they made points to the fact, you know, that they noticed.
But sometimes you need to make hard choices and not just say, well, we warned you the budget was gonna go up and, well.
Well, I wanted you to.
Making a lot of money to make decisions.
I've heard the, and I've heard the rumor before, so I'm, I, it scares me. As everyone knows, it's two-thirds of our budget as a town.
I know.
That's where all of our money goes. We manage that little third, and that's about it, so. You know, we'll uh, we'll have to wait until uh what is, what we see, and then we're also gonna, you know, see what our enrollment is, because that's gonna have a big uh tie into it.
Right, and and how are we hearing about how AgSTEM is doing? Because, because as you know, when we were going through that debate, the the, and I was totally for it. I still am, but the naysayers were saying this was gonna cost us a lot of money, because kids weren't gonna come there.
No, definitely.
No, they they have an update on that, and that'll be all part of their proposal. We do get some money back, so that'll be.
Is that going well, or?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, good, so it was.
I don't know the financial numbers, but yeah, I, every time they, we talk about it, it's uh been very successful. And they have more people coming in.
So that's not the problem. Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, there's money coming in, because there's students from out of town who are paying to go to the Ag program, so there's that and there, you know, state money coming in. There's, so there's revenue that actually gets generated through the Ag program, which is really nice.
Thanks for doing that, Tim.
I just wanted you to know the money, you know, they're gonna ask for more money, so that's really.
Understood, understood. I'll get you both these. All right.
Okay.
I'd rather bourbon.
I know, Russ.
But that's it. I've got nothing else.
All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I just ask my question and clarification at the end of the meeting? Would you allow that, Patrick, for the upcoming uh February twenty-second public hearing? I just wanted to see if some clarification could be brought. May I have two seconds?
Sure. Are you guys good with staying on? I'll stay on. All right, um, we have a motion on the floor. Did it get seconded?
Second.
Oh, second.
He made the motion. Kim's gonna second it. All in favor?
I.
Okay, Board of Selectmen adjourn, Meredith, go for it.
Okay, um, so, um, I'm trying to understand this special events permit that's come about. I've never heard of it before. I know you guys have been talking about it. Um, maybe because I haven't been following along, but I went back through the zoning minutes and the Board of Selectmen minutes for two thousand and twenty-two, and I went back to March and zoning. And I've been back at least six to seven months while this meeting's continued with the Board of Selectmen, so if you guys could please direct us to where we could find that information, where this idea came about. Um, and really kind of the details about what it's about in the minutes, I would appreciate it, because I've looked. Um, and then the proposal for this event that we're having the public hearing for, I would like to know at the hearing, when was it brought to us, or when did we approach her? Because from her video um of the minute, she said that Patrick and John approached her about bringing this event to the town, so was it proposed then? Uh, was it proposed in January? Was that the official proposal? Um, and I'm just trying to figure out what mechanism brought her to our town, if we reached out to her or if she came to us, and what mechanism at this public hearing will be put in place, I guess, going forward. Will there be an application, a fee at the public hearing? Um, that she is like kind of a contract with her, um, because I don't know what we have that would contract her, because all we have is just a permit to rent the park for residents only. Um, so I think those are some major questions that will help um clear up some miscommunication, and I'm sorry if I led the miscommunication, but I was just going through the videos to the minutes. They don't correlate and going back and trying to put this together to make sure, moving forward, that there's full transparency, because in tonight, she said there's been no advertising or promotion of Roxbury Days, but we do know there has, because she took it down. Um, and I just want to make sure that we have full transparency, so whether this event does happen, great, then we're all on board. It's fully transparent. There is no gray areas. Um, and if it doesn't, well, then maybe we come back, we make these committees, um, and then we see how we can pull it off for a scale that fits our town. Um, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you for the time, uh, Russ, Kim, and uh, Patrick, for me to speak at the end. I know it's usually not allowed, so.
Of course. No, 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 no. You're fine, and I do appreciate your feedback. I'm gonna grab these real quick if I could. Uh, we, I met with Kara in the middle of December.
Okay.
So we brought it, we brought it at the January meeting. I did not approach anybody. They approached me. I did not seek out anybody for this. This is a proposal that was brought to me to clarify.
And 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 even if you did, Patrick, what would be wrong for that? You're supposed to.
I'm, 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 I mean, people bring ideas for me and I bring them forward. That is literally my role. That is literally my role, no different than Chris Steers or Bill Steers and and or or Doug White or anybody else that would like, or the recommissioner, anybody else that wants to do those things. So that's how this came to the floor. This was not, not me seeking it out. People do come to me for that. Um, and then for the zoning, for the special permit, we don't have a policy in place. Uh, the one that we were uh mirroring, the way this conversation started, was Newtown. Actually, because they have a really good, you know, special event permit for holding those. Uh, and again, that's, that's something that we kind of pushed uh kind of towards zoning, um, because I feel that that was, that was part of that, so we did discuss it, and I'm I, it it's been on the, it's, it's been in the discussion, but I keep kicking it to zoning, kicking, zoning will kick it back to me. There was some uh uh preliminary stuff done.
The first time it seems there was any mention of this um was in the November meeting of last year uh in the zoning minutes, and it was tabled, it was, it was.
Yeah, that's about right.
It it was tabled by Mr. Horegon until December. So here, so here I think is where lies the concern from us residents is that are we putting together this permit process, because we've identified that currently we can't possibly have an event like this, because it is for residents only, right? So, you know, are we putting this thing together to allow these types of events? And if that is the case, then fine, that's, that's fine, right? But I think what needs to be spelled out with the public is, do we want a special events permit? Do we want people from outside of our community coming here and holding major events? I think that needs to be determined first with the residents prior to determining whether or not we want an event at all, right? Because it seems like from tonight, many of these people are concerned with these big events, and like you guys talked about Billy Steers. Billy Steers is a known resident who has done events. We all know Billy and he's gonna have a great thing, and I don't, I mean, I think that's wonderful, and it's right next to the uh, the uh, the Roxbury Market, right? I'll be driving some business to him. That's a great event, man. Why, there's not much to talk about there, other than the fact that maybe the field might get wet, you know, of course, us country bumpkins will grab our tractors and pull them out of the mud, you know what I mean? Because that's what we do. But um, this, this other event, I I I have concerns with the fact of the time.
Well, we'll bring that up.
Okay, yeah, and we're gonna go, we, we are, I can't, we are now out of meeting and all three of us are here, so we can't go anymore. I wanted to give you guys the chance to.
Yeah, thanks for letting us have some time at the end, Patrick.
But, of course, of course.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta eat.
Back through the minutes to see where I can find if it originally originated, or maybe, um, since you're on zoning, if you can find it in the minutes, or if you remember back where this started. If it goes past back November, I would just appreciate it, so I can just read over it and I'll keep digging, so, but um, we'll see you on the twenty-second. Thanks for tonight.
All right, thank you all, and I think everyone's. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.